All right, everybody, welcome. Let's get ready. Oh, that's wrong venue. Thanks for being here. I'm going to call this meeting to order if you would please call the roll.
Chairman Wykoff.
Present.
Commissioner Cloud.
Present.
Commissioner Dillon.
Here.
Commissioner Noble. Commissioner Connolly.
Here.
Commissioner Marr. Commissioner LaRue.
Here.
Thank you.
All right, we do have a quorum, so it's good. We can keep on going. I would call for public comment, but there is no public here to comment, so we'll dispense with that. I need a motion for approval of the minutes from the March meeting, please.
I make a motion to approve the minutes as written.
Got a motion? Anybody got a second for me?
I'll second it.
Thank you, sir. All right, all in favor of approval of last meeting's minutes, please call the roll.
Commissioner Dillon.
Yes.
Commissioner Connolly.
Yes.
Commissioner Marr.
Whoops.
Commissioner LaRue.
Yes.
Commissioner Cloud.
Yes.
Chairman Wykoff.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, minutes are approved. I don't see anything under new business at this point or anything under old business, so we're going to go right into our administrative presentation. Thank you for being here.
All right, well, thank you all for having us tonight. I know we've been here before, but I'll reintroduce myself. My name is Hannah Schaefer. I'm an urban planner at Kimley Horn, and I'm joined by Madison Parker today, who's also an urban planner on this project. So we wanted to come here today and kind of give you an update on where we're at with the project and what we've heard so far from our community engagement and some of the things that we're doing right now, and give you a preview of our draft, goals, and recommendations in the plan as they stand today, and talk about what's next in the project. So in terms of, you know, schedule, we are still on track. We're probably going to end up completing this early summer, end of spring timeframe, which is pretty good considering, you know, we did have a little bit of an interruption last fall. So we'll be rolling out the final plan beginning of summer in the June timeframe, so that's when we'll have our final community engagement meeting. And just a reminder, the purpose of the plan, it is a long-term vision for the city, so we're establishing goals and recommendations to guide that vision, which we've heard from community members, but also backed by data and existing conditions analysis as well. And what we've heard so far and what we've done so far, we've held two community workshops. Our second one was in January, which was more attended than the first one, which was good, and we had, you know, productive discussions, which we don't always get in communities. So it's really encouraging to see that, you know, the community members care and really want to have productive conversations and are really invested in their community. We've also attended several pop-up events throughout the year of this project, different demographics. We've really heard from a lot of different people, whether it's residents, young or old, people who are visiting here just for the weekend or for the day, or people who come here every year. It's like a family vacation for them. So we've heard a lot of different feedback, which is good. And we also had our first online survey last year, and we do have our second online survey happening right now. So you may have seen some flyers or notifications about it. We're going to continue pushing through social media, email listservs that we've built up through the time that we've been conducting outreach. And if you all can pass this information on to your constituents as well, that would be really helpful. We're trying to get as much feedback as possible on the draft recommendations and how we can prioritize those recommendations. And we still have our interactive online map going, which has been online throughout the project, and we're up to 56 comments as of a couple weeks ago. And every time we go to these pop-up events and the community workshops, we're always asking people what their vision is for Madeira Beach, and we get a range of answers. You see some of these on screen here. Couple weeks ago, we were at the Johns Pass Seafood Festival. We got a lot of comments about parking, a lot of comments about, you know, events and wanting to see more events in the city. So really a range that is reflected in the recommendations, which I'm going to go through tonight. And our recommendations and goals follow the six focus areas, as we're calling them, and you'll see as I go through them, they kind of follow the same pattern. We have a goal, which is the umbrella of the focus area, and then under that umbrella are the specific recommendations and strategies to help achieve that goal. And I'll note that a lot of these recommendations can fall into multiple focus areas, but we did have to decide where to put some. So if you see a focus area and you're wondering why maybe something isn't in there, it might be further down the road. And of course, if you do feel like things are missing, that's what we want to hear from you tonight, is get your feedback on, you know, if there's things that you saw in here that you really like and we should prioritize, or if there's things that might be missing or need to be changed a little bit. And where we're at right now with the recommendations, you know, we've heard a lot from the community, so we're really in the final stages of any last things we can add, and then also working with the city and the different departments to ensure that these recommendations are implementable and that they're going to work. And then we'll also be holding stakeholder meetings with other agencies like FDOT and Forward Pinellas to make sure that any of the recommendations that may affect them or may require their partnership are supported by them as well. So I'll start with the first goal, and I'll kind of read the goal statement, give you the highlights of the recommendations, and if you have any questions, you want to come back to something, we can definitely come back to this after the presentation is over. Or if you want to jump in, we can have more of a discussion. We can keep it pretty formal or informal tonight. So the goal for the mobility and transportation focus area is to create a safe and convenient transportation network that prioritizes all users, including pedestrians, cyclists, motorists, and public transit users. So some of the recommendations that fall under this goal really relate to just providing transportation for all modes. It's not prioritizing only cars or only bicyclists. It's providing, you know, sidewalks where there might be gaps, providing safer bike lanes so people can travel safely on Gulf Boulevard, providing more bike parking at destinations, providing more parking in general for cars. So that's some of the main themes that we've heard. And for the new development redevelopment focus area, our goal statement is to support sustainable growth that balances community identity with economic vitality by directing growth towards the city's activity centers while maintaining neighborhood character. And this really stemmed from a lot of what we heard was, you know, people want to see growth in the city improve and redevelop, but they want it to meet the character of the city. They want it responsible, controlled growth where it makes sense and matches what you have now and reflects the overall character. So that can be done through a number of ways, mostly through land development codes, standards, regulations, things like that. And our goal statement for economic and business development is to foster a thriving local economy that supports small business development and encourages a diversity of entrepreneurial activities that meet the daily needs of year-round residents while also providing memorable experiences for visitors. And again, very similar to the previous goal in recommendations, that some of these overlap a little bit, because as you get new development, you get economic development. But mainly, it's, you know, fostering a place where people can open a small local business, and those businesses thrive in focusing on things like that, utilizing the amenities you have here with the working waterfronts and really leveraging that huge asset you have for economic development. And for sustainability and resiliency, the goal statement is to promote stewardship of coastal resources and invest in adaptive infrastructure to mitigate flood risk and support long-term community resilience. Of course, we know this is a pretty important one for the city, and I think what we've heard throughout our engagement is ensuring that, you know, when the next storm or hurricane hits, the city is more resilient and can bounce back quicker. And so that includes, you know, improving infrastructure, improving buildings, and things like that. The goal statement for the Parks, Recreation, and Public Space focus area is to optimize the use and accessibility of existing public spaces and recreation amenities to better serve the needs of current and future residents and visitors. Some of the main things we heard was, you know, people love the park spaces you have here, like Rock Park is a huge amenity, and you have some other smaller pocket parks. So how can you activate those, better utilize the space that you have for certain programming or certain activities that may be missing in the community? So that can be assessed through a Parks and Recreation master plan, and we'll be listing some strategies in the master plan as well to activate some of those areas. And the final focus area is beautification and placemaking, and the goal is to encourage creative planning, design, and programming of public and private spaces to increase cultural and social vibrancy and reinforce Madeira Beach's identity as a small fishing village that has evolved into a must-visit coastal destination. And some of the key things we heard is more public art, and public art that really speaks to the history and culture of the city, low-maintenance landscaping, which again can kind of fall into the Parks and Recreation category, but low-maintenance landscaping that can stand the test of time and won't require too much maintenance. And also, you know, revamping the existing public facilities through facade improvements, paint, public art. And what's next for us? I know I mentioned that we're currently working with city staff to really refine these recommendations and strategies to make sure they are realistic and implementable for the city. And then we're also going to be identifying other funding opportunities to help achieve some of these recommendations and goals. And then we'll continue with our last phase of community engagements. Right now, we have the online survey that is occurring. We'll have those stakeholder meetings with FDOT, PSTA, and Forward Pinellas to ensure that any recommendations that we're providing in the plan that might touch them or fall under their jurisdiction has their support and future partnership as well. And then we'll have our final community workshop in the June, early June timeframe to really roll out the final master plan. So that's all I have tonight, and I know I went through the goals and recommendations really quickly, so I know if there's anything you all want to come back to, more than happy to have a discussion on that.
I've got a few. One in terms of golf carts considered in the transportation.
Yeah, I'll go back to transportation. I'm not sure if we specifically said anything here, but that has something that, there's something that's come up is golf cart parking is one. Golf cart crossings, especially along state roadways, can be complicated. So something that we're definitely looking into. I don't recall if Tom and I had a specific strategy just focused on golf carts, but maybe Madison, you can pull it up and we can list that out.
Well, I'm talking mostly in terms of like for parking.
Yeah.
There were two motorcycle parking spots in the whole city as of a year and a half, two years ago, and they were changing those two motorcycle parking spots to motorcycle slash golf cart. But you're talking about more bicycles, but there's more and more golf carts in the community also, and they can take up less spots.
Yeah, and that's something that's, you know, not unique to Madeira Beach. It's unique, I think, to all beach communities. So we're definitely seeing more and more of that. And a strategy we do have listed in here is for the city to examine their onsite parking regulations. So that would be something that they would look at when the time comes, is, you know, can you be more flexible and allow more golf cart parking with the limited amount of space you might have?
Parking is really a big, getting to be a big deal as more and more of these lots go private. The costs, the fees they're charging, I mean, they're driving people away. It really is. We have such a shortage of city-sponsored parking that's at a reasonable rate, and then you get these other ones that, you know, if you, after the seafood festival, if you went through any of the social media feeds and Nextdoor and things, you know, people were really upset about paying $30 to $70 an hour for parking.
Yeah.
And I know there's no way to regulate that. I mean, not that I'm, I know, I know we don't have it now. I don't know if there is some way to, I mean, I guess you can't stop capitalism, right? But at some point, it's detrimental to the community at large.
Is there any licensing that you need to operate a parking lot?
Yes.
Okay.
Restrictions.
So.
You can't have a parking lot in your house.
No. What I'm basically saying is, and I've heard this, $20 an hour to go to the, you know, by the time you spend three, four hours there, it's a lot of money. So how do you control that? Through licensing. And then there's got to be a balance. In other words, you know, let's say Times Square or, you know, anyplace on a holiday, I can understand, you know, getting a little extra money, but, you know, $6 or $7 is a lot of money per hour. So why couldn't we regulate that through licensing? Is that possible?
Well, I would say licensing and the parking people. Parking people have the ability to go around and shut you down.
There you go.
Possibly.
Got to be real careful what that could be taking a property to, you know, overregulation. But anyway, just something that, like, 10,000-foot view, parking's an issue.
Right.
We got to try and figure something out.
Also, I've got a few more here.
Yeah, keep going. Let her rip, Tater Chip.
How do you get the online survey?
The survey's on the city's project website right now, so I do have the QR code in here as well. I think Andrew's willing to city website.
I'm just going to show you, show you how they get there. So if you go onto the city's website and go to Community Development Department. I put the survey in two different places. I have it on the front page of the Community Development Department page, which takes you to a separate page, or you can go to the master plan main page where I have it, have it embedded in, and also a link to it if you want to do it on a separate page. Megan deals with some of the, like, Facebook, social media stuff, so she can obviously post a direct link to the survey to make it easier, because I understand sometimes her website can get a little confusing, and I hope we do fix it to make it easier to use. But I just wanted to show you where it was located, and we definitely want to post it more on social media and try to get.
Could we possibly send out the link to all of the city people that have their email already linked to the city?
Yeah.
So like, kind of like the, you know, whatever urgencies we have and all that, the emails. So I mean, you know, so at least that can be sent out simply enough, you know, I think a group text here is the survey. Please fill it out.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, we can send you all an email that you can easily forward to your constituents.
Well, I mean, not only us, but the list of all the city people that want to be kept up with all the information on the city going on.
Yeah.
We do have certain email lists. That's what Commissioner Dillon's talking about. I would have to talk with Robyn and Megan if we're allowed to do that, to send it through those, like, out like that, because it'd be up to them really, so I'll have to talk with them tomorrow.
Well, I mean, you know, I think it's a good idea because, like, everybody's wanting, everyone that signed up for those emails want to know what's going on in the city. This is something that's important to the city.
Absolutely.
Which kind of got into my next final question is, in terms of responses and what you guys would recommend. When you recommend that, will you give us at least an idea of, like, you got 77 people did the research in the first one, so if you have 40 wanting to do this, will you at least give us why you're coming up with the ideas of why you're doing that?
Yeah, in terms of specific recommendations or just overall?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, so we haven't asked, like, specifically, you know, line by line, if people agree with this recommendation. You'll see in the second survey, we do ask, you know, do you agree with this goal statement? Are there any, you know, recommendations that you like or have an issue with? Is there anything that's missing? So we are asking for more open-ended feedback, just because it is really hard to get feedback on line-by-line items, but this is a combination of what we've heard from the community, and that's how we got to these initial recommendations.
Okay, and then I guess also in terms of if you, I don't know if you're doing this, but if you have the difference between visitors and residents, which I don't know, that could be a fine line, but yet, you know, if you just talk to somebody that went to the seafood festival and this is their first time, and they say, oh, parking sucks. Well, everybody knows parking sucks, but like, you know, there's certain things, like, they might say that is a once occurrence, you know, hopefully like the storms that we've had.
Yeah, and we don't want to look through just the lens of, you know, visitors or just the lens of residents, or trying to look through the lens of everybody. So in our online surveys, we do ask for people, it's optional for people to put in their zip codes. We do know who is a resident and who is not. Also, we can kind of tell who isn't from here based on some of the responses, and also when we get a lot of responses from people who aren't from here, it's usually after we go to a pop-up event, so we can, we can usually, you know, figure out.
And when they're out in their boot?
Well, that's what, well, I was at the one meeting and the whole table I was with seemed like they always stayed across the bridge, and they wanted to do all this stuff at the bridge and the bathroom and all that stuff, and I was just like, well, okay. How many people really utilize that bathroom over by the 9/11 memorial? And in terms of priorities, you know, I think there's more priorities for other things. And that's where kind of all my questions were kind of coming from, as far as, you know, they stay over and stay over there and they come across, and/or people from Treasure Island. I mean, you know, it's important to know, but to what value?
Mm-hmm.
So.
Yeah, absolutely. And, you know, if you all, you know, tonight have ideas, like, what is, what you think is the highest priority, that, you know, that's why we're here. We want to hear from you all, what you think. So if there is, you know, if you could do like three things in the city, what would it be?
Is that a question for now?
You can call it over, but that's, you know, kind of what we've been asking people. It's like, you know, what is like, just like the one thing you're like, I just want, you know, this done, either short term or long term, because that's what this plan is. Not everything's going to be done overnight. It's going to be, it could be, you know, 10, 20 years down the road.
It seems to me that getting the city back online after the next flood would be.
Yes, yeah.
So hardening the electrical, having the right equipment to get the sand off the road, all of that stuff. The bridge was closed for too long in order to get the infrastructure at least drivable. That took too long.
Yeah.
Through no fault of anybody, because we hadn't had that situation before, but that would be my number one, is how do you get the city back online next time?
Yeah.
That would be a big one.
Yeah.
It's not fun, because it's infrastructure, and it's not fun stuff. It's not signage and parking.
Yeah.
Cute stuff and all that, but it is an element.
Yeah.
It's at least 50% of the important factors, I think.
Absolutely.
So Gulf Boulevard and the Tom Stewart Causeway, those are state roads, so we had to rely on FDOT to clear those, because we don't own them. And for the most part, they cleared, considering how much damage there was, they cleared them pretty fast. I mean, it would have been nice to be faster, but Gulf Boulevard was covered in like, kind of snowdrifts of sand almost, like it was.
Oh, yeah, it was amazing, yeah.
So, but making sure to coordinate with FDOT, so they're ready, ready to go ASAP would be important. And then clean up our local streets, too. I mean, that falls on us to maintain those and make, I know there was a big issue with debris piles kind of blocking up roads and stuff, so kind of dealing with those things would be, kind of fall on us, but.
Well, some of those things would be procedural, some would be capital equipment investments, some of those things would be new agreements with, you know, the county and the federal level and the state level. There's a whole bunch of little things that could have made it better, but it's kind of the first time in 100 years that it happened here, so that's a good excuse, but if it happens in the next 10 years, it won't be such a good excuse if we kind of fumble through it again.
Yeah, and we do have specific recommendations under sustainability and resiliency relating to some of those things in terms of procedure and operations for, you know, getting the city back on its feet quicker now that, you know, we went through the learning experience.
So another question is, are you guys pleased with how many, how much input surveys and stuff that you're getting back?
Yeah, yeah, we're very pleased. We just launched the second survey, so we haven't gotten too many responses now, but again, this will be running probably through the end of the month, if not into May. But in terms of, you know, the in-person events, we've gotten a lot of great feedback from people. The community workshops have been excellent for getting, you know.
Do you have an idea of roughly how many Survey Number Two feedbacks you've got?
Not yet, not yet. But we, I would guess probably around, you know, 25 right now. We did go to the Johns Pass Seafood Event. That was kind of our first event where we had launched the survey. I'll say, I don't think a lot of people were, you know, taking an online survey was too high on their list at that event, but we got the word out, and we're going to continue, you know, sending emails through the email listservs, really pushing it out on social media.
Have you considered maybe something as old-fashioned as putting a little blurb in the beachcomber with a QR code?
We could. I don't know if that.
If you talk sweet, I mentioned they do it for free. I mean, they should do it for free.
Okay.
I'd lean on them to do it for free and get a little blurb out there with your QR code. We would love to hear from you, kind of thing.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea.
Yeah.
We'll look into that.
Really, it wouldn't just be local, it'd be everybody that reads.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
So I have, I guess I have a comment. I'll add to your question, which was what's most important. Resiliency definitely is the most important, but I personally am like really passionate about improving golf. It's something that's a little bit more palatable, I guess. I don't know. I just feel like I just, I think of it as a big racetrack, and like even this week with just, or this month with more and more people back, it's just been tough. And I feel bad, like, I feel bad driving down for our visitors that they have to work around Gulf Boulevard, even though we've tried to put in the pedestrian crossings and all that. I, you know, some of them are too far away to want to go all the way down there, and then they're, you know, running across, holding their small child's hand. It's just like, I wouldn't do that, but, you know, it's just, it just, it really could use a little bit of love, I think. But I have a couple questions. What's kind of the, what are kind of the low-hanging fruit that you're seeing, like, that would be implementable, that people are passionate about? And then two, like, what do you, what are y'all perceiving as kind of the top one or two things that people are really like zeroing in on specifically?
Yeah, I'll start with the things that people are really zeroing in on, and it's the parking, which is no surprise. I think there's a lot of support for another public parking garage, whether that's in Johns Pass or in the town center area, so that's a big one. The other thing is probably the resiliency piece. We've obviously gotten a lot of feedback on, you know, more resilient options, you know, what residents can do, what the city's going to do. For low-hanging fruit, I think it really. For low-hanging fruit, I think it really is, you know, it's for the city updating, you know, code, land development standards, like that's low cost, that's really just like staff time. That's the easiest way to enact specific change, whether it's parking regulations or, you know, design of buildings or the type of uses or businesses you're getting or the types of housing you're getting. The other low-hanging fruit's probably the beautification component. There's a lot of things that, you know, community members can do in terms of beautification. You can do storm drain murals, you can do pavement murals. I think the city just unveiled their new mural, like just the other day. So there's a lot of lower-cost things like that, which, you know, you say to someone like, oh, like a painted storm drain, like, yeah, like that one thing isn't going to make the city better, but when you start to layer all of these other elements, it really, you know, establishes a sense of place and, you know, people have pride in their community because they worked on that. So those, there's a lot of things, you know, that the city can do, but also a lot of things that the community members can do, which we're going to lay out in the plan where it's like, you know, we've had a lot of people invested in this and we're going to roll this out and they're probably going to say, well, you know, well now what, what can I do? So we're going to try to identify those things, so community members can stay involved and help bring this plan into fruition.
Has been any, anybody identified or brought up that they think we should maybe expand some of our commercial zoned areas? Because if you, you know, as a person who owns a business in the town, if, and I have to relocate because I no longer have a building potentially, but there's very little, I mean, there's very little commercial, there's very little business space other than in John's Pass or on the corridor. And there are certain streets that if you look at them, it would make sense that a few streets could have a little bit more of a commercial feel to them and then that creates a little bit of a community within the community, right? I mean, you, and you could, you could dedicate intensity levels as you travel back, right? So that you're not throwing a high-intensity use right next to a residential property or something, but, I mean, that's something, I know that's probably more for us as a group to consider, so we'll kind of call that planning commission discussion, but that can be part of the bigger picture that goes into our master plan, is we had previously, I would, believe it or not, I was involved in the last master plan 20-something years ago, what was it, 2002, right?
Yeah, 2002.
The Duane Plan. And that was one of the things, and that's where we started getting these, our, what do we recall it, geez, I can't, my brain just went flat, but, you know, activity centers. So we were talking about three of them, John's Pass, then one in the middle and then here in municipal area. And it's sort of taking shape, right? It took that 20-something years to, for that to start to happen. But I think continuing in that process where we have certain places like along where my office was, that 142nd, 145th corridor, where on Palm Drive would be a great place to have more commercial, if it was art galleries and, you know, little things like that, that would create a more, more of a sense of community instead of being a wall of businesses and then just residential from their back. And it, it sort of doesn't let you build any character. If you go to some of the older places in Florida, St. Augustine and places like that, it's all kind of mixed together, right? Or even Gulfport, yeah, is a perfect example. And, and people love that feeling and so, you know, as a big picture, it'd be really nice to be able to take that commercial and sort of blend it a little more in instead of having a hard stop.
Yeah, we haven't received too much feedback on that specifically, but I do like where you're going with that. You know, you can have that smaller, you know, coffee shop or something that you can walk to from your neighborhood, I mean, who doesn't want that?
Well, I think some of your results are getting skewed, not because of anything you're doing, but the people that are most likely to come out to these things are people that have a problem.
Right.
Or that are, are anti-something more than pro-something. It tends to be the way and that's just human nature, I think, you know? I've got a beef, here's how I air it because you're allowing me to.
Yeah.
And the people that are kind of content but would like, hey, maybe this would be cool, eh, they kind of let that fly.
Yeah.
So I think some of it's weighted in a, in a way that it's mostly, hey, let's keep it the way it is and we don't want any changes. The NIMBY people, you know, they are the ones that tend to get out and be a little more boisterous.
Yeah, yeah, we have gotten quite a bit of feedback on just maintaining the neighborhoods, so, yeah, not anything, anything specific that's against like smaller-scale business, but just, you know, keeping the smaller, lower residential, you know, density neighborhoods.
And, and people are afraid now too, after the storms, that everything's going to be taller, how, bigger houses and, you know, because, and they're going to hate, some are going to hate it. I mean, but there's, you know, we got rules, right? I mean, we got to compile with FEMA and state rules and things, so.
Yeah.
I have a question about, like, I think there were a couple of things in there where it was like recommending the implementation of XYZ, kind of like the code stuff or whatever it is. I think one of the things that's come up here a few times since I've been doing this is, you know, we'll get a by-right development in here and, you know, we're, we're kind of just like, they're here, they're doing it by right, there's not much we can really do about it, but maybe there's some things about that architectural plan that we're seeing or the planting plan or, you know, whatever it is, and we're like, hmm, this doesn't look so great. So is part of beautifica, is there, like, I think this would be a good opportunity to put on paper, something that a lot of us have agreed on in the past of like, we think there should be some sort of an architectural review board that can review these new developments so we can maintain that character, the cohesiveness and those kinds of things. And right now, we have no agency there really at all, unless it's a P, unless maybe it's a PD, maybe there's some stuff that we can do, but it's not, yeah, I mean, it's just tough.
Yeah, and Andrew, you can go ahead.
Yeah, so down in John's Pass, the zoning you guys adopted does have design standards and guidelines, so that's basically the first part of the, the city that does actually have that. Unfortunately, we haven't had any development come through that, that needs a major site plan review, eventually, probably soon enough, but this is, kind of would give more teeth if we had this in other, like, let's say in the C3 zoning district, which basically encompasses the commercial side of Gulf Boulevard and 150th. Having something similar to this within that zoning district, you, you would then, when it comes through, be able to see, well, they got to put the dumpster behind the building, the parking has to be behind it, they have to shield the air conditioning, they have to do all this and that. So I mean, some of it comes down to having it in our LDRs and, and.
Yeah, I think, I think the main thing is like, I personally believe in efficiency though too, where it's like, I don't want it to be this like board that can really, that may not be qualified enough to really be telling the person who's presenting a design to not do XYZ, so maybe there's a mixture of what does that look like? What are the best practices with, how does this board operate? Like what are, what's their agency level? And then like, maybe it's partnered with doing that where we're expanding those standards to different zones. I, I don't know, just a thought.
Yeah, and that's something that we've, we've talked about and that's putting, you know, a whole other process on the city and is that something the city wants to take on? Like that's, that's the question, what does that look like? So definitely something we've talked about, because the architectural component is, is pretty big.
Matthew, we, this is going back about a year with Schooners and their parking garage. If you remember when they did the presentation, I said I would not approve their, that plan because it was a square box. And I think a couple of other people went along with me. They came back the next month and they completely redrew it and changed it. And all of a sudden, it was like, yeah, that's, you know, um, but we don't have that, that kind of input all the time. And that's wrong because they're not utilizing the planning board. And that's been my pet peeve for a long time. I mean, why isn't some of this stuff coming before us so at least the seven of us can put our input in and kick it around? You know, I mean, we're all very educated here and between the seven of us, we can come out with something. It's just like with Karns and his new restaurant that he wants to put on, on John's Pass. The front side looks fantastic, but only 20% of the people that are going to, into that restaurant are going to come there by boat. What about all the people that drive up to it? And, and if you remember, I said, no, this, I said, change it. And he grabbed me outside and he agreed. You know, that's the input that I would like to have with us. And, you know, I keep talking about this until I'm blue in the face and it's still, no one has given us that kind of, okay, you can, you know, you have that speck of work
I believe it's.
Coming before the planning board.
It's steps. And this with the step being John's Pass, the area there.
Right.
It's now the process is starting and we've, we've been going at this same way. We want to be, you know, in, in charge, well, we want to have more input before it gets finally thrown in front of the commissioners and they have so much stuff on their plates, you know, their meetings are three, four hours all the time.
Yeah.
Twice, and so that's where we got to start and that's something that I guess you can start with as a master plan, something that needs to be done before it gets to the final stage.
Yeah.
So I guess is what I think is very good here.
Yeah, and we have, I'm paraphrasing it, but we do have a strategy that talks about creating a lookbook of sorts to kind of communicate what these preferred architectural styles or features are because per regulations, you can't regulate, you know, specific things for the whole city unless you're in a historic district, which the city is not. So there's only certain places where you can do that, but we can provide supplemental, you know, information and guidelines for the city to leverage.
See, there's a, there's a building that's getting completed now down in, in the activity center that Baggins has just finished up, three-story building. At first, I thought it was going to be a square box and ugly and we never saw the plans here. But now the finishes and how he's rectified this looks fantastic, but we don't have the input when it comes before us to say, okay, we want that building better, the next one that you do or whoever in that area makes, and just keep stepping up.
Yeah.
The level or the playing field or whatever you want to say, you know?
Seems like the first place to start would be like a non-binding architectural review. That way you don't go all the way to the HOA crazy Karen level.
That's a fantastic idea.
But you do have sort of a public level scrutiny of your design and that could often, like, like you said earlier, lend some pressure on improving some, some elements without being too dictatorial.
Yeah, at the end of the day, they want to make something that people are happy with. They're not just, you know.
So once there's a, you know, a review and a some public comment capability, not in every place, but in the activity center in certain areas, a non-binding architectural review shouldn't upset anybody. It's not binding, but it does put a little spotlight on sometimes what is your ugly design, like Caddy's, which looks like a warehouse that was elevated, zero architectural beauty.
But you, but you know what I'm saying, you know?
Yeah.
When, when you visit another state or another city and all of a sudden you make a turn someplace and you go, wow, look at this.
Right.
And you're driving down, honey, look at this, this is gorgeous. That's what I'm trying to present and get over here because that activity center can look very ugly.
So how do we propose something like that though?
Well, I've been trying to do that all.
Require something that's non-binding, but it still requires a little looksee in certain areas of, you know, Madeira.
So I, I just wanted to bring up the, our site plan levels of development review. So anything major, this is stuff that would come in front of you guys. So some of the projects you brought were either ones like the, the project along, was it Pelican Lane, where it's technically one unit, so it wouldn't, it wouldn't meet the threshold to be a major site plan review. By state statute, we can't really do much with single-family and duplexes to enforce design standards, that's just state statute, so we can't get around that. It would be more likely if we wanted to expand the required major site plan review, let's say for fourplexes and up for multifamily or, honestly, anything commercial basically needs a major site plan. And then we have certain requirements for 21 parking spots or more, that's why you have to do the part, you, you guys had to do the parking lot for Caddy's as a major site plan, was it hit that threshold? So obviously, and this is stuff we can change in our LDRs that we probably want to, after this process is done with the master plan, take a look at again. But I think the challenge is we haven't had a lot of projects come through, like even stuff like the beach flowers, only eight units, so it didn't hit the major site plan. Even though it's an eight-unit condo building, it's an intermediate, so it didn't hit the threshold to have to come here.
Yeah, so, so I mean, without spiraling out of control on it, right, it's just, I don't know where the limits of your recommendations and scope can go, but thinking about how do we make those, that next step? I think the lookbook thing at a bare minimum is a great recommendation and I would encourage, like, that's a great start, just something that, it is technically, it would technically maybe be a non-binding thing, but it's like, hey, you know, we see you have this, this is what we want, or something that's a resource for people that are doing design and they can go online and find it. Yeah, something like that, just.
Yeah.
It could do food for thought for the commission, once it gets up to there.
But.
But I mean, you know, but just like, hey, we're questioning this and so they have the final say, so we're putting a blip on it. And if they don't change it, then we go to the meetings and say, okay, I don't feel this is right because of this. And they have their complete, you know, understanding of what they want to do then. But I agree with you completely.
I think the whole thing here is, we live here and we see it every day. And what we see coming in the future, of course, we want it better. Who wouldn't want it better? Who wouldn't want it to look better? And that's what I'm getting at. We're not looking to make it look uglier, we want it to look better. We want to be proud of where we live and I can't put it any better than that.
Maybe the first place to start is to see how other communities like Dunedin or Tarpon Springs, ones that have a look. How do they deal with that? Do they have architectural views? Are they trying to stay in a lane? Is it binding? Is it non-binding?
Yeah, I know.
How do they do it?
Dunedin specifically, yeah, they do have architectural review standards, they're actually looking to update those pretty soon, but they have historically had, you know, these are the architectural styles we want you to use in certain areas of the city. So that's how they do it.
Maybe Michael would know this. From the, from the Madeira Beach Line on Gulf Boulevard, on Gulf, on the Gulf, I, I call it the Miracle Mile because of all the beautiful homes, the multimillion-dollar homes. Every one, it, it's like you look at one and you look to the next one, oh my God, and you go to the next one, oh my God. It just gets, it does, there's no crap there. Is there a board up there that did all of that?
No, that's part of their LDRs too. You know, the, the way their zoning is made, there's, you're talking about Reddington Beach.
Right.
There's no commercial zoning in Reddington Beach.
I understand that, what I'm talking about.
You don't have, you know, and there's, they don't allow high rises, their, you know, their height restriction is 35 feet, I think throughout the entire city, so it won't, would not allow any of that. So you, you don't get any of the bigger buildings until you hit the North Reddington Beach Line.
But you, you can get a bigger building that looks beautiful too.
Yeah, I get it.
But I'm not.
Yeah, I don't know their, I don't know their stuff well enough to comment on that. I just know that they don't have any commercial at all really in Reddington Beach, so.
Yeah, and that's one we can definitely work with the city on a little bit more and kind of elaborate and kind of figure out how we can further identify that and specify it in the master plan recommendations.
Cool.
I guess one thing I, I just wanted to touch on because of the commercial stuff, I guess kept thinking about it. I know with the, back when we were doing the John's Pass stuff, one of the reasons why we did it was, at the time, the category we had was this retail and services category the county gave us that had a, a very low commercial floor area ratio and it was more of one that you'd see more in a suburban area for like a gas station or a Walmart or like a McDonald's, not really, it didn't make. Not really, it didn't make sense in Johns Pass. And the problem is, it probably does, that category doesn't really make much sense along Gulf Boulevard or Hundred Fiftyth either, honestly. Because what, one of the challenges is, so we do a lot of mixed use along Gulf Boulevard, but what happens is that point five-five FAR, basically for every like one square foot of commercial, you have to dedicate like one point eight square feet of lot area to that commercial. So you end up just, a lot of these lots, especially because they're, the lots aren't very large because when Gulf Boulevard was wide and it took out like a good amount of the frontage of these lots, like you're, it really makes it hard. And then, and then we for some reason have like a twenty-five foot front setback. Some of these lots like are really hard to use without, at the moment doing variances sometimes for the setbacks, but like, that, but that's stuff we could fix, we could fix the setback stuff pretty easily. But some of the stuff like with the land use, that, that requires going through the whole process of doing the land use and zoning change potentially. It'd be more of, I mean, it rarely wouldn't impact density. I mean, the density, the way it's set up is fine, it meets what it needs to meet. And but it's more that commercial floor area is kind of that point five-five. It's like, even if it was like a one or one point two, it'd be so much more usable and be like, and that would be going basically from like the retail and services to the resort category in, in the countywide rules. We'd call it something else on our local map, like we don't, wouldn't call it, we'd call it probably either like something, either Gulf Boulevard commercial or tourism commercial or something. But that, that would be one of the options to fix it. But that, that requires many public hearings and stuff. And that would be like a very, more of a long-term over the, but that's kind of one of the issues is why we're so limited on commercial in Madeira Beach is a lot of that retail and services category is pretty limiting that the county gave us. And on our map, it's Commercial General and Residential Office Retail, or it's usually Zone C-three or C-four.
So is this on, on some of these points, right? Where we, we have, we have opportunities in our LDRs to like kind of massage some things, change some things, whatever. Is that, is that in your scope? Like, is that going to be, is that a potential recommendation that y'all will be making? Is that something that we should, you know, be ready for and something that, you know, we can maybe take a look at and say, hey, they're, you know, they're recommending that we do this, this and this. And we need to like figure out how to get that on the agenda and move forward like later, you know, once it's done.
Yeah, so we do have a limited portion in our scope right now to look at the C-three and C-four zoning categories for some of, you know, the issues that Andrew just mentioned. So it's very limited there, but we are recommending kind of these other like next steps, like what the city can do or if they, you know, need to hire a consultant to do it, what they can do to remedy some of the code as well, so.
Very good. Anymore? I think we sufficiently cleaned out the, got into the weeds and found our way back out. That was nicely done. Thank you for all of your input, really appreciate it. I know you guys have been working really hard on this, so thank you and we'll look forward to this as it develops.
Great, yeah, thank you all. We love working on this project and working with you all, so it's a pleasure to be here.
Thank you so much. All right, anybody else have anything else, planning commission discussion wise? No, okay.
I feel like we got it all out.
Yep, your list is, your list is done? Anything, Matt?
I said, I feel like we got it all out.
Yeah, I think we did, we did really well. Thank you, thank you for all that and the great responses. So I guess that brings us to scheduling our next meeting, which is going to be May fifth here at six PM, right? Sounds right, okay. And with that, we'll adjourn the meeting. Thank you.